We will go ahead and call the October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five school board meeting to order. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Aaron Schultz.
Here.
Mr. Brad Olson.
Present.
Mr. Brian Hart.
Present.
Mr. Darren Beckus.
Here.
Dr. Gail Bortner.
Here.
Mr. Kevin Burkard.
Here.
Mr. Mark Ruff.
Here.
All right, next on the agenda is good news items.
Yes, we have some very good news again tonight, except I lost it.
Nope, you lost it.
Yes, this evening we would like to recognize this school board for once again earning the ALL award, which is for act, learn, and lead. This is an award that's given out by ASBSD, and this is the top award that a school board can earn. This is done by the contributions of the members of this board by doing things above and beyond simply serving on the board, so things like training, attending meetings, advocacy, those types of things. So going above and beyond. Our ASBSD cheerleader is here this evening. We went for the gold again, Mr. Alm, and we got the gold, so, yes. Go ahead.
Just to comment, I just think this is a wonderful thing that transpired for this past school year, and I admire that, and as you know, the great participation in professional development. I do think this is a neat award for our community because they know we have a school board who does professional development in various ways. There's three different ways we can achieve that, as you well know. So I think each one of you can be extremely proud of what happened, and please go for the gold next year, would you?
Thanks, Mr. Alm. Well, as you know, this is not something that all school boards do receive, so this is a really big honor, and I do appreciate your efforts.
This is our eighth, this was the eighth year out of the ten years the program's been in session.
Okay.
And I think one of those years we missed by a couple of points.
It won't happen again, Mr. Alm. Congratulations to our board.
All right, thank you very much. We do have tonight's agenda in front of us, I'd ask for a motion for approval.
So moved, Mr. President.
All second.
By Sharp, second by Dr. Bortner. All those in favor of tonight's agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same time, thank you. Persons wishing to address the board. Board remarks, important remarks for this evening. We'd like to thank our legislators for, representatives for being here tonight. Obviously, this is a partnership that works well for all of us, and we appreciate you taking the time to listen to what we are up to and all the great stuff that's happening at the school district. So we certainly appreciate that, and we did bring out Mr. Alm to keep you gentlemen in line just in case. So thank you very much for that. Also, we have the approval of the minutes from September eighth and twenty-second in front of us. I'd ask for a motion for approval. Motion by Olson.
Second.
Second by Beckus. Any further discussion regarding the minutes of September eighth or twenty-second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same time. We do have consent agenda, would anyone like anything pulled from tonight's consent agenda for further discussion? None, I'd ask for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Murphy, second by Sharp. Any further discussion to be had on tonight's consent agenda? None, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same time, thank you. Reports to the superintendent, Dr. Guffin.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda tonight is our Central High School reports to the board, and Dr. Ottermark is here to share what's happening at Aberdeen Central.
Good evening, everyone, I'll get this running again, I think. Or maybe I'll pull a Mark Murphy and nothing will work.
That's exactly right. That's Murphy's Law.
Okay, I think we have it up and ready to go. Thanks again for allowing me to be here. You know, I get the, I get the privilege of working with these people, these great kids at Central High School, who are just a ton of energy, they keep me young, they make me old all at the same time, I think. It's a joy to work with the, with the kids here in the Aberdeen Public School District. They're just kids, and their hearts are just wonderful, and I love working with them. We're gonna talk about a lot of good stuff. I got lots of, I think, pretty neat things to chat with you guys about tonight, and I would really welcome any, any questions along the way. You know, and the vast majority of this, this really neat good stuff I get to chat with you about tonight has to do with these great kids, and of course, our hardworking staff and imaginative staff, and they're just working their tails off, and their hearts are in the right place because they're just there for the kids, you know, it's very simple. So that's what we're about, and so we're gonna talk about some of those things that we're doing. District goals, we have to talk about that because that's, that drives the things that we do on a daily basis. We'll chat about them a little bit here first, we'll get through those. But when it comes to student achievement, the state assessment, as you know, we're switching over from the South Dakota assessment to the ACT exam for our assessment. And I'm just all in on this. The more, you know, I had some reservations, I've, I've been an advocate for this switch for quite a few years with the idea that, knowing that it doesn't come with challenges and knowing what, kind of what the end results are gonna be after our initial switch, but this is gonna work well. Our kids are now taking a test that a vast majority of them, it's a high stakes test for. Where the South Dakota assessment, they didn't necessarily consider it a high stakes test. And so our staff is just totally on board for doing everything that we now can because it's a state assessment, since we have the abilities to invest some, some of our, our school budget into preparing them in a better way than we have been able to do in the past. Because we're not trying to just prepare our students to do well in the South Dakota assessment. Before, we were dividing our, dividing our, our powers, so to speak, between the South Dakota assessment and the ACT exam. And now we can put all our eggs in one basket. And so I really feel like our kids are buying into it, we tell them, we can help you. And, and when I say that, they're looking in the eye and they're shaking their heads as I'm having that conversation with them. So I'm really excited about, about the opportunities here and what this can present on behalf of our kids and making the switch for the assessment to the ACT. We're gonna have a day called the Testapalooza, we're stealing that. Kent Hanson came up with it, didn't come up with it, he stole it actually. Kent Hanson, assistant principal, he stole it from Rapid City. The Rapid City School District is doing it. And what we're gonna do on the day that our juniors are taking the ACT exam as a state assessment, we are also gonna have our freshmen and our sophomores take the pre-ACT exam on the, on the same day. And some, a little bit of budget wizardry to pull that off, but we can. And we're gonna do it because we think that's money very well spent on behalf of our soph, our freshmen and our sophomores in regards to helping them be best prepared to take the ACT exam when it's their time to come, to do that. So we're very excited about that, we don't have all the details worked out about how that's gonna work, but we have buy-in by the students and we have buy-in by the staff, and I can't say that that has always been, that we have had this much enthusiasm in regards to the buy-in on these things until we've, until we've taken this approach. So we're very helpful. Also, for student achievements, the math curriculum review year, we're not sure, you know, how that's gonna go yet because we're still waiting for some state assessment things to come out in order to work that process a little bit more. But meeting with Pat Math Department, just did so at the last in-service last Friday with them, our math department, they're very excited for the process, whether we are able to finish out this year or whether we have to go into next year to finish out that, that curriculum review. I know they're very excited about it, and it's gonna be an opportunity for us again to review what we're doing and then move forward in a positive way. Another new exciting thing that is, is going on is, to think just of the legislation that has gone through, is the GED in-house program development that we are, that we now have. Is, in the past, the GED was pretty much through the Department of Labor, and now we have the ability to take over some of those responsibilities ourselves. And to be perfectly honest, I've always said this is, this is the best place for this, this is the way it should have been all along, and so I'm really happy with this moves. And we are now working with some of our kids that are especially our, what we call our super seniors, our students that have been here four plus years with us, that, that still have, that they're still in the game. So we have to take our hat off to them. They may have had life circumstances that have, have given them curveballs or not allowed them to finish in the four-year window, and they may be a little bit far behind, or maybe getting their diploma is just not in the cards for them in their life and how that's gonna work. And, but we have, we have more than a handful of kids that are involved in the GE program that's in-house and working in-house through our, our format there. Deb Henderson is a great help with that, she's in our Independent Learning Center program, and we're very excited about, about that opportunity. This is definitely not, I could talk about district goals and academics all night long, so I'm just hitting some of the highlights and some of the new things. So another one of the new things is, of course, is, I think, I don't know if Mrs. Call has shared with you, but we got a new literacy grant, and that, that came through, a pretty significant one. We're very excited to work with, with that grant and to do new things to promote literacy at Central High School. And so we are forming a literacy committee to help as part of that grant process in regards to what we're gonna do, very early stages of that, so you can't ask me any details about what we're gonna do with that yet because we are just getting going. But it's a very, it's a very exciting process. Any questions on any academic things, yes?
What's on the ACT? I think we were told last year by you, Jason, that most of the universities have dropped the requirement to take an ACT test prior to applying for that.
Yes.
And SAT is probably the same. My, my question is kinda like, and I think it's a great test to take, and I think it's always had value, but if universities are not caring about that anymore, are our kids gonna not care about that when they get to be juniors or seniors? Because it doesn't matter if they're not requiring an ACT test.
That's a great question. All right, and great commentary. First of all, is, that happened just after COVID. I think now that we get further away from COVID and the, the, with testing and group testing and stuff like that, is, is that some universities are now starting to, to bring it back.
They are.
So I, I don't know that it's going to, I, I'm not sure to what extent. I, I know there's gonna be some universities that just won't bring it back because it, honestly, gosh, by not having this as a prerequisite, it helps their enrollment or the ability to get more students in. So I don't think we're gonna get them all back, but we are getting some back. And I say we, you know, that just the education community, and whether they do or they don't is, be arguable either way as to whether it's a good thing or a bad thing. But make no question about it, is the ACT score is still prominently used by universities, whether it's a requirement to get in or not. A vast majority of our juniors are still, they understand that, is, there are a lot of universities out there that, that have benchmarks, whether it's twenty-one, or twenty-four, or twenty-seven, on the ACT. Even though you can get in, but if you hit a certain benchmark, you get an automatic scholarship and, and get more funding. So ours, in our, of course, we, we're doing our job, we're telling our juniors all about that, our high school kids about that, and, and about how this is important, how it matters, and this could be worth thousands of dollars to you. And just making a two-point jump in the ACT can, can really financially pay off in your favor. And so that's, that, that is why the, the buy-in is there, and, and our students still care, they care a lot.
And for the freshmen and sophomores that we're talking about the pre-ACT.
Pre-ACT.
Is that a requirement, one hundred percent of the students have to take that at no expense?
Anyone can opt, anyone can opt out because it's not a state requirement. But right now, we are working under the assumption that all our students will, will take it. It's free, there's no reason not to, it helps them prepare for it. But is, is, is it a requirement? It's not a state requirement, it's just kind of our wish.
Historically in the past, what percentage of our students roughly took the ACT in the past years?
Oh, gosh, you're gonna put me on the spot, I have those numbers.
About fifty percent, I think.
No, I think it was.
Higher than that.
It was higher.
Higher than that.
Yeah. But not a ton, I'm trying to think about the number or percentage of kids that went on to post, post-secondary, the four-year, the four-year programs, and so it'd have, it'd have to be between sixteen and seventy.
Yeah.
I could find the exact number.
I, I remember sixty-seven percent for some reason back in the day, but.
I wanted to ask about the GED. If these students are able to take the GED, are they able to graduate with the other kids?
No, because they're not getting diplomas, and school board policy doesn't allow it. So the short answer to that is, is no. They have a, an equivalent, a society equivalent, but I'll get my PowerPoint back up here in a second, but no, they will not, they cannot, they cannot go through the ceremony. Okay, district goals, wellness, health and wellness. This is always a fun one, I've always enjoyed staying physically fit. So anytime that we do stuff and we get into these little health challenges and stuff like that, I get into them and I enjoy them. So personally, is, is I always, I always liked the district goals, and I always look forward to the Wellness Committee doing their job in regards to, and coming up with a plan. Dr. Board is, is assistant principal at, at Central High School. She's the one that sits on our behalf on the district wellness committee. So I asked her before this, I said, where are you guys at? She says, we haven't had our first meeting yet, it's just coming up. So I, I don't have the, I don't have the, the grand details on, on what the Wellness Committee is gonna come up with and what the challenges are gonna be, but we like it. Obviously, the, the health and wellness also pertains to our kids, and we do a lot of things there. We got a great school nurse, Tessa Riggs is wonderful, she's very, very active, and along with our PE department and our health teachers in regards to, to having a program that helps promote wellness. And even really, our health occupations programs, now that we have it, the ACT, that's up and running and doing really, really well, is, is another great promoter for our, our students on behalf of health and wellness. Any questions about, about that goal? Okay, school and community relations, this is the one, gosh, if I start to ramble, I apologize, but there's so many neat things I could talk to you about with this. You know, one of the things that, that we've been really working really hard at the last few years is just our social media communications and, and reaching out to people in so many different ways. And we have, we have improved by just leaps and bounds, I would say, over the last, over the last three or four years. You know, and, and it really goes to discredit a lot of people, you know, first of all, you know, leadership of Dr. Guffin really pushing hard, and she's, she challenged me a few times in regards to doing it and doing it right. But, you know, people like Alyssa Dickey, just incredible in regards to what she does to help promote that. I got two assistant principals that are just, oh my gosh, you, you, it's almost unfathomable based on kinda, you know, the generation I come from in regards to like what Dr. Board and Mr. Hanson do. They just flat out get after holy buckets. They're getting so many things out there, it's, it's, you know, I, I'm glued to my phone and I go to the, all the CH stuff out there, and it's so much fun to celebrate all the things that are going on through the social media that, that, that we're promoting. And both, you know, Mr. Hanson and Dr. Board have done a great job, and, you know, Mr. Jensen too. I mean, you know, from a district standpoint, he's been so much help with us getting, getting these things up and running and making sure everything is connected and working well. So that connection with our community, I think, is, is just really, really taken off in a way that, that's, that's, that is so helpful, because that is, that's how it's done this day. It, it just is, it's the modern era and it's the modern way it's done, and we are fully involved. You know, other people that, that really help us in regards to our community relations is, I also want to give credit to, you know, Gretchen and our foundation, they, they're extremely helpful. Eric Chaffaus, who's in the Eagle Zone, what a great way to communicate with, with our, with our public, and he does a great job, all the awards that we've seen, they, they have won. So those kids and, and that program is just incredible. I have to take our hat off to our parent organizations, because we got incredible parent organizations. If you could, you come into Central High School any given night, any given day, and you're gonna see parents around all the time, between our PTA, our music boosters, and our athletic boosters, and our pride parents and things like that, they are super, super involved. We have community members like involved in the junior achievement events where they're coming in. So many community members out there in regards to our, our ATEC programs and our internships out in the community. It's, our community embraces the public schools, and our public schools embrace the community, and by golly, it's, it's just a joy to watch it work together. During the Hall of Fame week, we had a bunch of the Hall of Famers come in and speak to our kids. Oh my gosh, if you wanted to show up and be entertained all day long, you could just run from room to room and watch, watch those presentations, and it's practical presentations to our kids. It's, it's, they're just great, great connections. We had parent-teacher conferences this fall, I think all this stuff that we're talking about kinda comes together, and, and our first one that we had this fall, a few weeks back, about three weeks ago, we had parent-teacher conference. And over the years, with, I think with all the other connections, with the ability to, to text and email teachers and to, with the ability of the parent portal and stuff like that, our parent-teacher conferences have been dropped off, just little by little. The attendance has dropped off year by year, little by little. I said, but we have done so many neat things, I think, with the social media and promoting it, and then, and promoting parent-teacher conferences using that, stuff like that. It says, we, this fall, we actually had the largest attendance at parent-teacher conferences that we have had in probably the last eight or nine years. And that's a really, really neat sign to get, to get the parents back involved, wanting to be, sit down in the classrooms and have those face-to-face conversations with the teachers again. So we can see it with numbers and statistically how much this is paying off. So I, I really love what we're doing in regards to the, the school and community relations. You know, I mentioned the, the ATEC building, Robbie Johnson, who is, who is new there, director at ATEC, he is doing a wonderful job, what a great partner he has been, and with, with us in, in the main building. And he will come and do his own presentation, so I am not gonna steal all his thunder. I will let him come here and do all those things. When it comes to, to districts and community partnerships, he could stand up here for twenty minutes and talk about that for another twenty minutes, so I'll, I'll leave that for him. Any other questions in regards to school community relations? Because this is a fun one for me.
One here is the internships, and I know we've seen this program really take off. And ballpark, how many internships were last academic year, so how many students do we have out?
Per year, I'd say per quarter, um, obviously around fifty or sixty per quarter, so a couple hundred? Yeah, a couple hundred, two hundred, two hundred and fifty internships per year, per school year. Almost all of our seniors do an internship, almost all of them.
I know at our business, we've been fortunate enough to have some of the high school interns, and they just add a, a new perspective, a depth and breadth of, bring a little bit of life, and also just help us understand, like you said, from a perspective that we don't see all the time. And so I'd love to see that program.
Great program, kids love it. They, they learn so much with the internship programs, is, I'll be blunt, sometimes they'll do an internship and they find out that they didn't, they didn't care for it. And here's the thing, is, and that's, that's not a, that's not a bad learning experience. That means that, that they're now won't go to a two-year degree or a four-year degree and start something that they're not crazy about doing. And they found that out because they went to the internship programs. Now, a vast majority of them, I think, just reinforces what they wanna do because they're choosing that in the first place, and it's where their interests and loves lie. So I think a lot, most of those experiences are really great experiences, both for our kids and for our local businesses that are, that are helping, so. But yeah, no matter whether they, they had a great experience or the, that didn't have such a great experience, either way. District goal is safety, we've done some new things this year, and they may have been brought up at, at these board meetings before, so I, you know, I won't spend a ton of time on them, but we did the emergency tabletop exercise before school started this year, kinda late summer, which was, which was a great experience, very valuable for, for the administrators and the people that took involved that were part of that. For a couple of years now, we've been doing safety audits, and we're doing that now on a yearly basis in the fall. And every year, it's good, we get, we're walking around our buildings, we're finding all the emergency shut-offs for everything, and we're going through with the emergency panels and knowing how to work those, and, and going through our, all of our protocols and our procedures every single year in more depth than we have previously. We, in the previous years, we would go through it, but we'd more or less go through it as individuals, and now we're doing it as a team, and those conversations are so valuable and, and so much better to make sure that we are all on the same page. State schools online training, staff, students, our, well, even students to some extent do that, but staff, all staff do that, just administration. And every year, that seems to grow just a little bit, and, and again, a very, very valuable experience. It's a bit of a chore, some of us cuss a little bit when we're doing it, and, oh my gosh, I gotta get that done. And every time we get done, we're glad we did it, so. Obviously, we do all of our drills, fire, tornado, intruder drills. We try to do them as, at Central High School, like all the other schools do. We try to make them as realistic as we can. It's, it's, it's never just a routine thing, it's, it's very serious. Every time that we do a drill, we talk to the kids about the seriousness of it. Here's, the unfortunate thing is, the, the kids understand it. They understand that these drills are serious and important. And so I'm not sure if the lack of naivety from our kids is a good thing or a bad thing this day and age, but they, they get it, and we work real hard at it, and the kids do too. And of course, we're having the ongoing process of mental health first aid training for all school members, and I can't say enough good things about that and the importance of that. I'm glad that has been part of our processes for the last several years. Any questions on safety? School culture, here's another one that I, I could go on, probably on for way too long, so I'll try to be brief, but my enthusiasm, hopefully you get it. But really, really since the COVID years, and we kinda got past the COVID years, we've, school culture has taken a turn or direction that I'm, I'm just so excited about. And again, this has to do with a lot of, I won't take credit for it, not even the slightest, actually. I'll maybe take credit for it in the fact that I got a lot of good people that are working really hard at it and are embracing it, you know, so it's, it's, we're maybe getting the right people on board with us and, and letting them run and doing a few things. I would say is I'm not necessarily the smartest, most imaginative person in the room, far from it, but I can usually recognize really, really good ideas when I see them. And I got a lot of people around me coming up with some really good ideas. And so we, we have been able to run with a few things in the past few years that have promoted school culture. The very top one there is SOAR, you've heard about them before, so I won't go into a ton of details about our, our SOAR program. Our SOAR program works for our kids and for our staff members. Is our students, we do a daily recognition, every single day, a different student is designated as a SOAR student. Our students do the daily announcements, so our students get to read great things about what other students are doing. The students that are doing the announcements are telling the other kids about the things that are other great things our, our students are doing. We have a weekly staff recognition, and how you get this is you have to be nominated. We got a spreadsheet that goes out there, we send it out, and we, so we get a list of all the students that are nominated for the, for a SOAR student. And here's the really neat thing, we recognize one, you should see the list. You should see the list. To try to pick a, a student every single day, wow, it's, it's really hard to do it justice because they're, the list is so doggone long. And the same thing goes for staff, the staff list, you know, we, when it comes to, and it's not just certified staff, it's, it's, we, our staff, it's, it's a custodial lunch, it's, you know, it's, it's all the staff, it's the EA's, it's, it's the administrative assistants. And again, same thing, this is a weekly thing, if you, you look at the weekly list, and the list is renewed every week. You don't, what you're on, you don't stay on, you gotta be nominated again to get back on it for the next week. And it's still staff members, thirty, forty staff members every week on the list. And you can be nominated by other And you can be nominated by other staff, you can be nominated by students and neither can nominate, so, is, the nominations can come from a lot of different places. It's, it's just, it's, you know, I, I, just to see it is, it's, it's really a joy because you get to see how many great things, how many different people are doing. And it's, it's, it's very heartwarming to understand exactly how hard our kids work, how kind our kids are, how they're looking out for one another, our staff the same way, our staff helping each other out or helping the kids out, going up, and it's all, usually the criteria is above and beyond. So we all know what they do, we know what their job requirements are, you don't get on this list for doing your job requirement, you get on this list for going above and beyond. And, and the list is extremely long, so what a joy that is. You know, Dr. Board is the one that initially came up with this, but everyone in the, in our building has really ran with it to, to a very high level and a high degree, so. So I'm glad to see the SOAR stuff soaring the way it is. The freshman experience is, we have worked very, very hard on that to make that a little bit better. We all know how important transitioning kids is to high school. You know, we, we, we transitioned over to, we've always had a group of, of upperclassmen that would help transition our freshmen in. We've, in the last couple of years, our counselors have transitioned over to a group called Eagle Squad. So we have, every single year, if you want to talk about kids taking care of kids, you don't get anything for it, they don't get anything for it, but they show up, since we get, we get 60, 70, 80 kids that will come up and, and run, are part of the Eagle Squad and their sole purpose is just to help transition our freshmen over really well. We used to do, just have the one, like a one-day thing where they would do it right at the beginning of the year, one day, that was what the Eagle Squad did, but now they're going above and beyond that. They're meeting with the freshmen, they go back into freshman super studies, they have, so the conversations are now ongoing, it's not just the beginning of the year and a one-time thing, okay, now you're here, now you're good, we can not worry about you. It's not the way it's working. We're going to worry about them for a longer period of time and throughout the year. So hats off to the, to the counselors and the Eagle Squad students that are, that are involved in that. We're going to have our first ever freshman SOAR meeting this Friday. So we're having a, just a special, probably about a 45-minute assembly just for our freshmen and we have never done that before, so I'm really kind of excited to see how that's going to work out, just to celebrate them coming to Central High School and getting through their first term, because our first term ends on Friday. And so we're going to celebrate a lot of things with, with them this, this Friday. Couple of things that are new, we've done, we started some, a new switch into how we're meeting with our staff. And we tried one thing last year, it worked a bit, we thought we could improve it again. So we, we're now having what's called, we call grade level staff meetings, which is new for us. It's, it's not, it's nothing ingenious, but, and it's nothing earth-shattering. But, you know, all of our teachers are advocates, in other words, they have an advisory, when they have an advisory, they work with our, they work with a certain grade level of students. And as, as, as they do that, so now we're getting all those teachers that have freshman advisory, all those teachers that have sophomore advisory, is, and then in about once every four weeks, about twice a term, is, is we're having a staff meeting with them very specifically to talk about their students in advisory. We want, we're talking about how are they doing academically, how is their attendance, do we have behavior concerns that, do we need to set up a behavior plan or something like that with them? And so is, is, and then as administration, we, we can share back with the teachers some of the things that we know and what we're working with on. When you combine that, that, our grade level staff meetings along with our, our student assistance team program, which we have a group, a set of teachers that work there and our counselors, is, I really feel like we are doing so much better this year than we have in past years about reaching out to parents quicker, sooner, in regards to possible concerns that, that might exist. And we're making more positive comment, or contacts than we've ever made before in the past with parents. And, and I really feel like this, even as a school, I feel like we're all on the same page better than we have been really, you know, for the, for the first several years of, of my tenure. So I really like how that's going and I can honestly say, as I don't want to jinx this, but is it last year when we started these, these things, is, is we, we got to see some, we watched some improvement. Our, our failure rate dropped pretty dramatically last year statistically, but we know one year can be an anomaly, so we're paying really close attention to what, what's happening now. And we are again, the first term, when I looked at the, the failure rate just this morning, I said, "How many kids are failing?" We're getting close to the end of the term. And we're trying some really neat, hard, really neat things to help those kids that are kind of on the verge of failing to not fail. And right now, the number of kids that are on that failure is just, it's as low as it's ever been. And so our efforts are paying off and our staff know their efforts are paying off. When I say the efforts, it's staff, staff is working their tail off. They're doing things, we've asked them to do some things they've never done before and they're not, they're not just doing it, they're embracing it. And so I really love where this is going, so, in regards to, to our, our school culture. Can't walk away without mentioning the theater updates, I love how the theater is, the new sound system in there, that, that works with our grounds crew and tech staff, working really hard to upgrade that and it's, it's working and what a beautiful upgrade that has been. So it was an investment by our taxpayers and our district into that upgrade and it's been a, it's been a very wonderful upgrade there. Working much more smoothly, sound is so much better, so. Great job with the theater updates and it just makes our experiences, when we have tons of events there, holy macro, busy place that theater, it just makes it so much better. And I never want to forget this, I, I had to throw this last one on there, but, you know, our debate team, they, we give them all kinds of accolades, they stand up here every year, maybe a couple of times, but I really don't want to forget them in regards to the school culture. They do so many things in regards to school culture because they're, they're not just active in debate, they're usually active in a lot of other things and they're, they're part of our, I think is part of our school culture. But I just want to give a, take my hat off to them because, you know, there are over 3,000 schools that participate in the National Forensic League programs, is we're 16th in the nation out of 3,000 schools. And you're not going to find very many public schools in the top 100, they're almost all private. And so to be at that level, not just a little special, it's a lot special and I want to make sure I keep bringing it up time and time again. Does anyone have any questions about us and things that we're doing at Central High School? I'd love to chat about it there. Sorry, I know it took a while.
Just one question, I usually ask the resource officers this question because I always worry about, you know, there's always turnover of staff and they're bringing in new officers all the time. I mean, I want to make sure that they have an orientation, that they have to respond in high school, middle schools, they know which doors to go to, those types of things. Do we get any kind of report to know that they've, new officers have been orientated to know how to respond to Central and where to go and those things?
I think Dr. Guffin would probably get that report a little bit better, but here's what I know is, is I know anytime that someone new comes in, is this Officer Kernan brings that officer in, they always introduce them to me, I, every time there's a new police officer, I always meet them. There's never a time I don't think that I haven't met them. So I know Officer Kernan does that, he comes in and shows them around. But to, to, you know, to what extent or what level, I can't really say, I'm not sure exactly what all their training is, that's not my level of expertise, but I, they work hard. I love our Aberdeen Police Department, we're good people.
You get to meet them.
Oh gosh, yes, yeah. Yeah, if I get pulled over for doing something I'm not supposed to do in town in my vehicle, I, yeah, I pretty much know everyone I'm talking to.
Other questions or comments for Dr. Ottermark?
Thank you, I'm sorry for going over, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Josh is gonna, next item on our agenda is our fall enrollment reports. As you know, the last Friday in September is designated as our enrollment count day. So that day has obviously taken place. That was on September 26th this year. I did add a slide to the presentation this year that I just wanted to begin with. I will give you a couple of caveats to this, but what you're looking at is the top line, the red line is the birth rate for Brown County, and I got this directly from the Department of Health. What I did then is I correlated the birth rate year with the year of the class enrollment. Now, obviously, school year and birth year are not exactly the same. Our school year does not run January to December, there are certainly some children who are born in one year and certainly students who are born in another year, but nonetheless, it's, it is about a 50/50, so if there are some shift over, but I just thought the correlation was rather interesting. So the top red line then is the birth rate in Brown County. There are four school districts in Brown County, so we know that not all the children will be going to school in Aberdeen, Rotten, Ipswich, or not Ipswich, Northwestern, or not Northwestern, Frederick, and Warner, yes. So we know that they all don't come to Aberdeen. The blue line then is the, our school district enrollment. And if you did lay those one on top of the other, you could see the trend line is almost identical with, with two exceptions, one of which Dr. Ottermark did address tonight and that is the very first one. So children who were born in 2008, or many of them that were born in 2008 are seniors of this year. And I wanted to stay true to our enrollment numbers, if you looked at our 12th grade enrollment right now, there would be 385 students on the enrollment count. Now, Dr. Ottermark mentioned that there are some students who take longer than four years to graduate. Those students would be included in that number. So as you look at the chart, you'll see that those two points on the graph are closer together. That isn't an anomaly, that's just students who are here for more than four years. We also have our transition learning program that also takes place, students that are on an IEP that we do work with in various transition programs, those students would also be included in that count. So theoretically, they're really beyond a grade 12, so that's why those two numbers maybe don't look exactly like maybe some of the others on the chart. The other one, and I have zero explanation for this, I'll just point it out and just, it'll be what it is, but in 2016, which would be our current grade four students, that was the highest birth rate that we had in Brown County, but it did not necessarily correlate with our enrollment. That is the one year, there was an exception to that. So we do look at this very, very closely. You'll see our kindergarten number this year is 268. Our prediction, based on the algorithm that we use, which birth rate is part of that, was 269. So it is a very, it works very well for us to make some predictions about what is going to be happening with enrollment. But I just wanted you to notice that the enrollment, or that the birth rate in Brown County is decreasing, which contributes to the decreasing enrollment as well, so. Risk for having this. Go ahead, Josh. The next chart shows the, our enrollment report, I just simply compared the last day of school, which last year was May 20th of 2025, when we ended the school year, we had 4,110 students. Please keep in mind, we did have 98 early grads, so that does impact that number. And then when we started the school year, we had 4,144, that is our, our count for this year. So we actually have 34 more students at the beginning of this year than we did as when school ended last year. Josh? Okay, so comparing September of '24, so our count day last year was September 27th, we had 4,242 students. This year, count day was September 26th, we had 4,144 students. That is a loss of 98 students. And you can see a pretty equal split between losing students at the elementary level and the high school level. It's pretty self-explanatory, when we graduate a really large group of students and bring in a class of 268 kindergarten students, you will see that decline. Again, this correlates very closely with the birth rate in Brown County. And the last slide is just a five-year enrollment, we've been around from 4,416 students down to 4,144 students for the exact same reason that, that, that very first chart showed. Questions about the enrollment?
What do we receive per student, about $8,000?
Is that close? That's a little higher, I think it's seven something, but. Other questions while she's looking?
There's quite a few schools in the state that have lost students. It looks like down in the Sioux Falls area, you know, Ferrisburg and all those, they were gaining.
So we're not the only county. We're not. I'm just accountable to this one.
That's okay, that's okay.
I only know this one.
It's about 7,300.
7,300? So a loss of 98 students equates to about $850,000 less?
About 713,000.
The math is wrong, okay.
Anything else? Okay.
Next on the agenda would be the approval of the ASBSD delegate appointment?
Yes, yes. This is our annual delegate appointment, the delegate assembly will be in November, that is in Pierre. Each school board has the opportunity to send one delegate and this is where some of the decisions are made for ASBSD in terms of advocacy and some of the direction for the organization. Dr. Bortnum has expressed interest in being our delegate this year. Board would so choose to nominate Dr. Bortnum as your delegate.
I would nominate Dr. Bortnum.
All right, we have the nomination on the floor for Dr. Bortnum, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. While we don't necessarily need to take a vote on this, I think we will go ahead just to show our full throw of support to Dr. Bortnum on this.
Should I leave the room? Valid, yeah, yeah.
All those in favor of Dr. Bortnum being our ASBSD delegate signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would be her backup if she can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just hope I can be as good as Mr. Ohm.
Nobody can be as good.
Representing us, I know, I know, I'll try, I'll try.
No, it's an important position and thank you so much for stepping up and doing this. That does go right along with the additional things that the board does to, I think you need to stay on top of what's going on on the state level and also on the local level and just the advocacy as well, so thank you for doing that, we certainly appreciate that. We do have need for executive session under SDCL 1252-1. I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session.
No, Luke.
Sharp second by Olson. All those in favor saying aye?